Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the special board meeting for public hearing. This Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and may we have a motion for adoption of the agenda? It's been properly moved and seconded. All right, it has been properly moved and seconded discussion.
Madam Chair, you know, we're in somewhat of an uncharted territory with the supervisory elections, saying that right now we have two representatives in District Four and then District Two. And so I would like to request that any votes that we have be delayed. Let me get rid of this. So if we're not, if we're not scheduled for a vote today, then there's nothing to request.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Hyatt. Superintendent Simon?
Well, I was just going to point out that this school district has not received a formal document associated with the statements about supervisor elections at this point. So we don't have any formal reason for that.
All right, thank you for your comments. All right, Mrs. McGraw, go right ahead. All right, thank you. In talking with our school board attorney or the board members, I think we are in agreement, Mr. Hyatt, that we do need to move forward until we get any further information. Nothing has been clear, except for what we've been seeing in the games of sun on TV 20, Channel 4, but we do not have anything in writing from anyone. So at that point, what further discussion? Mrs. Surtin?
I'll let my discussion on my phone.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Hyatt? All right, thank you so much. If you turn your light off. All in favor? All right, opposed? The adoption of the agenda and also we did not have, let me go back. We did not have, after Mr. Hyatt's comment and the superintendent's comment, I think I should have called at that point, Ms. Attorney Hyatt. Was I supposed to call for the vote for that or die because of a second? Okay, all right.
I didn't make a motion.
All right, thank you. Then I stand okay to move forward. At this point, I'd like to call on Attorney, if she would come forward.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Simon. We are here for a public hearing that was scheduled for 11 o'clock this morning for proposed new and amended job description for administrative professional technical and education support professionals.
See if it's, the mic is on. It sounds like it, doesn't it?
It does. Can you hear me better now?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Okay, do you like me to repeat?
Yes, would you mind?
Right, we are here for a public hearing that was scheduled for 11 o'clock AM for proposed new and amended job descriptions for administrative professional technical and education support professionals. There have been a few changes since our first reading. There were four specifically that have been outlined. They've been given to the members of the board, they've been put on the website as well. And at this point, I would open the floor to public comment, specifically on this agenda item.
Okay. I'd like to say, if I can make a comment at this point, Attorney, turning to our citizens who are here and our citizens who may be calling in or watching from home, we are going to maintain what we are here for today on the discussion of job descriptions and anything that would pertain to that. But any other comments, and this will be the same for 6 o'clock this afternoon, I'll ask that you save all of those comments for citizen input at our meeting that's coming up next week. Okay? So Attorney?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would ask that you open the floor to the public comment on this. And I'm not sure.
All right, if we should have any citizens that would like to have comment according to what's here on the agenda, please speak now. I have one citizen, Ms., and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly, DeVosio. Is that, did I say that pretty good? Basso, thank you, I am so sorry for that, in correction. Next week, according to your topic here, we would be able to accept that on, at our regular business meeting. But this meeting pertains basically to our descriptions of jobs. Could you, would you mind going to the mic and then I will inform you at that point where we are and what we need to be able to do? And give your name, please.
Okay, sure, my name is Dee Basso, D-A-S-S-O, and I am here because I have a textbook from third grade social studies that had some inaccuracies in it. Okay, and it was a concern of mine, and because of what is going on with you hiring new teachers and whatnot, I want to make sure that these teachers are properly educated to know that there's errors in textbooks. And I have concerns as to how they wouldn't know that there's a distinct error and why they would teach something that is inaccurate.
Yes, ma'am. I do, now that you have explained and explained it clearly, we will certainly accept your input on next week at our business meeting on the 15th.
Okay, may I ask why you would not want to hear that now when it does?
The reason that we cannot hear it now is because we are mainly talking about the positions that are listed here for consideration, but with anything about something different from that, you know, if you want to tell me about the position or have a comment about that, you're welcome to do that within your three minutes. But as far as curriculum or anything that pertains to the classes that students will be involved in, no, ma'am, next week would be appropriate at that time.
Okay, and the reason that I thought it was appropriate is?
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
I want to make sure you're hiring teachers that are going to be teaching the correct curriculum.
Yes, I completely understand, but if you would save those comments for next week, I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you. I see no other comments. All right, Ms. Ward? Ms. Ward, does it pertain to job descriptions? Because that's all that we want to do today.
I'm Carmen Ward, I'm the president of the ACEA, and so I represent the bargaining unit of employees. I did want to say that in the last, in the superintendent's vision, I quoted that, she said, "ESR funds address many of our goals." And in those job descriptions, how ESR funds are going to be used for these reoccurring positions is confusing to me. And also, again, I do want to say that the union does need to have a seat at the table in not furthering away the multi-millions of dollars coming our way, but making sure they're used to support learning and support the classrooms and support our bus drivers and support everyone in this public school system that has a role. So I just wanted to put that out there once again, that we are ready to be invited to discuss how ESR funds are going to be spent. And I have just a question about the emergency manager position, because during the times that we're not in emergency, it seems like that is a lot of dedication of resource for emergency situations in the school system. I just had a little question about that. And also, the wherever SBAC used to be, we try to put ACPS, I'm thinking, and I noticed that on chief of police as well, that it's chief of police of SBAC instead of ACPS. So I was just, those were the things I wanted to add today about this. But that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Any other citizens? Any callers? Superintendent Simon?
I do want to make a modification, and Ms. Ward reminded me of that. We received some feedback in emails from citizens, and one point was presented that I, I believe you all were copied on in the email, my response, but I will address it. The concern was actually the chief of police position, that the terminology of police presents an image that we are perhaps, you know, having more influence of some form of law enforcement, and I think that that is actually not the intent, the intent is really to focus on safety and security. And so I would like to withdraw that job description, because the only association in the job descriptions was the title change, and so it would actually just go back to what it currently is, which is the chief of safety and school security. Okay, so it really is just a withdrawal. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes, I'm, uh-huh, thank you.
They just told me that I can come in and speak, I was outside.
Well, I'm not sure what your topic is about.
It's about job description, about organizational procedure, whether you're changing organization. The only thing I want to say is very-
Before you start, please give us your name.
Jonathan Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Graham.
Only thing I wanted to talk about is, is how the construction department is set up now and the organizational portion of it, making sure that there's someone who's leading the construction and facilities department that really understands the need for selections and setting out things right for actually the African community, African-American community here. That's the only thing that I look at, is what is changing or what is happening in that particular department, and that's all.
Okay, thank you so much. The other citizen, do you have a comment? Okay, seeing none. Mrs., we are now at number two.
Yes, Madam Chair, number two would be the proposed changes since the first reading that was held on May 18th, 2021.
Yes, ma'am.
And those are the four that were provided, both to the board and to the public. And so I would ask that you open the floor to public comment on those changes.
Thank you, Attorney. We are now, the floor is now open for any comments, citizens, as well for proposed item number two.
At this time, as far as the public hearing goes, we would just ask to recess this public hearing until 6:00 PM, this piece of it, so that we can give the opportunity for additional citizen input.
All right, before we move to that portion, I would like for everyone to understand that this is basically a recess until 6:00 PM, where we will reconvene in this room to continue the discussion. But I see that we have more discussion at this point, so Dr. Simon and then Ms. Surtin and others. Thank you, Attorney.
Sorry, and I think because of the recess component, I wanted to kind of add information, and I'll bring it at 6 o'clock as well, to respond to Ms. Ward's statement about the emergency management coordinator position. Oddly enough, I just yesterday was asked to join the EOC to talk about how we are going to be managing all hurricanes. Our facilities are a part of this as far as shelters, so there is a need for that type of coordination. On top of it, COVID has complicated how we actually shelter during our hurricanes and all of that, so it's a bit more, and the additional component is because the COVID task force is going to be absorbed in, this would be a person who would take on those additional roles. Oddly enough, I will have to say that in this situation, we have emergencies that happen throughout the year, it's not kind of a one and done type of thing, and especially our hurricane seasons last quite some time, so I think this position's important. On top of it, the EOC had mentioned that a good county for us to collaborate with is Orange County, seems to have a very successful coordinator in their emergency management office that they thought we should talk to, and the feedback that I received is that the county was very pleased that we had an individual dedicated to this position.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had, after our workshop Wednesday, the next day I went and see Dr. Simon, and she was nice enough to put me in, and I noticed almost, and I really appreciate her time. And one of the questions I had, and I, is something that maybe we could address a little bit this evening, either with Mr. Rello or Dr. Simon, or someone from HR, I was thinking about, I thought it was very clear, the superintendent said that many of these jobs are two-year positions, and the reason for that is that that's how long we have the money, and that in two years, we will be in a position to reconsider and see what needs to stay and what we can afford to have stay. In other words, it's a two-year position. So I just wanted perhaps a little more clarity as to is this going to be clear in these job descriptions that they are two-year positions? And are we planning for two years down the road where we might have to lose some employees? And I understand the whole idea of grant money, having been around the university long enough, where there are positions that are specifically grant-funded, but the question is, are we going to have people in there that will need to find another position or non-renew them because of the funding? So again, I think that would be, maybe an answer tonight would be great for me at all theater right now. If you'd like to talk to it right now, that's fine.
And nobody gets the attrition key in there.
Oh, well, I think I could be dealing, you know, just mentioned, we always, there's something the doctor Paulson talks about quite a lot, is that we, you know, always have some attrition. So that would be something also to consider, but thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Would you like to wait until this evening, or do you want to address some of this now?
Honestly, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to do it in both places, since we may have audiences that join in at certain times. So I have spoken with Mr. Hyatt and Mr. Rello, and I have spoken quite a bit, as well as we've had discussions with HR. This is not, I mean, soft money has been in existence for quite a considerable amount of time, and so having positions that are funded through soft money is not new. I think what we have done is we have looked at positions that we will need in order to do these efforts, and over time, things are going to change. We do know that we will have retirements in the future, as well as other individuals who choose to leave the district for other reasons beyond retirement. We are looking at these situations, as well as when I presented that this is a, it's a two-year focus to make sure that we have the right hands associated with the work that needs to be done in order to make sure that this $90 million is watched in a responsible way. I can tell you now that, I mean, with my background in finance and with Alex Rella serving as our CFO, I feel very confident that we are making these decisions and we're being very responsible with how we're handling the money, as well as being thoughtful with how we communicate what's going on with individuals who apply for these positions.
Thank you. Mrs. McGraw, I'm Dr. Simon. I want to pretty much all of my questions, because I've been able to discuss before twice, and the risk issue of chief of police telling me that, but also talking about the risk call and the issue of this, so I'm pretty much- Okay, that's Simon.
I do want to just throw something out there as well, because this was mentioned in citizen input, and I believe Ms. Surtin also brought it up. It's not in these job descriptions, but I do want to kind of present it to the board that we will be slowly modifying some of our job descriptions, like the vocational tech position, to align with current standards, and one of which I'm chagrined to even admit that I was using the term guidance counselor when school counselor is something, my dad was a guidance counselor way back when, and I've realized it's a hard habit to break. So we will also be moving toward redoing those job descriptions as well to align with some of the other concerns.
And I want to put in two, I was a teacher at the side, five, three, two, and two needed to feel that I worked with somebody else, but also there was an excellent one, the other three were in the team that was down in the south, out of town that we were in. And there's people from Orange, all over the state, Florida that come, and people from the state to come in and address that, and give it the training, for once, I know in the next few years. You didn't have the last year because of COVID, there are a lot of students that you came in. Thank you. Uh-huh, thank you both. Ms. Surtin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, girl, my question was from the other gentleman as well, and about the new positions that are coming on and the risk ones that are going to remember. So I don't have any further questions on that, but I do want to circle back to something that was said earlier in the meeting, and the situation that's come to light in the emails that we've already received, we've been copied upon, copied on from citizens, kind of bringing up a few things that are really concerning. Today's meeting, I felt what came up early today, in the meeting today, was unnecessary, because in this meeting, it being a special meeting, there was no voting to take place in this meeting. So I think, you know, in the past, we've all, despite our differences on the board, we've all tried to be collegial, but it seems that something has really gone off the rails here lately, and people are attacking a fellow board member, and even one of our own is seen to be taking a jab at her, when we don't have all the facts on that. There's a small vocal group making unsubstantial accusations, unsubstantiated accusations without having all the facts. This is not about where our colleague lives, you know, it's about overturning the election results. This is from the Trump playbook, straight out of the Trump playbook. Their candidate didn't win, and now they're trying to unseat Ms. McGraw, who was elected countywide by the citizens, the majority of the citizens of Alachra County. Those citizens voted for change, and I understand now that there's a small vocal group of people who are trying to overturn the will of the people. And as I said, we tried to be collegial in the past, despite our different philosophies and ideas on how we're supposed to move forward, but to me, that path has been abandoned. And I just, I feel really just some kind of way about how our member was, our colleague was smeared just a few minutes ago, when we have nothing official from the governor's office, from the secretary of state, we don't even have anything from our local supervisory elections. None of us have received anything like that, so it's very disturbing. I was further disturbed because I received an email, which all of us did, from a citizen, but another citizen then gave to me Mr. Hyatt's response to her from his board email account. And that's okay, he's free to respond however he wants, but what is really concerning is that it seems that one of our own is joining forces with those who are trying to destroy public education. He was delighted or encouraged that she sent this email to the education commissioner, to Senator Keith Carey, to Chuck Lemon, and it just seems that, you know, you're undermining one of our own without having all the facts, without seeing anything in writing that's official that states that she does not live in the district. So it just, it's, to me, as I said, I don't think this is about where member McGraw lives. This is about a group of people in this county who are this wrong because they didn't win seats in the 2020 election, and now they want to overturn the election and the will of the people. It's not about where Ms. McGraw lives. Really what it's about is what the failure of past boards didn't do, and what past district staff didn't do with those boards. Let's place it there, if we want to start pointing fingers. But I think it's unfair to start out this meeting and to say she shouldn't vote when we don't have anything official to be trying to do. That's not our place to remove her and to tell her that she cannot function. She was duly elected countywide, sworn in, and she took her oath of office, and we should stand on that and support that until we get something otherwise. So I guess the question is to ask, is Mr. Hyatt aligning himself with the men of the likes of Ward, Scott, Carey, Clements, Tim Martin, who were trying to actively destroy public education? You know, I mean, it was just really, it was really just moving to me that when the citizen met with me yesterday and gave me a copy of this email from Mr. Hyatt that says, "Thanks for your email."
I think you made your point quite clear. I'm not trying to click you off in any manner, but I see another light that's on, and I know that there is going to want to be an address of what you have stated. I'm going to allow that, but then, once that statement has been made, I'm going to close this meeting, and I'd like for us to note to the sun through Mrs. Peck that we may have a special meeting for all of us. I too am going along with many of the things you've said, but inasmuch, this is a public meeting, I'm going to stop you right there, let him have his say, and then we will continue deliberating, but we will notice it and we will go from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, since I was attacked, let me first of all say, for Ms. Surtin to accuse anyone else of being non-collegial with her Facebook presence over the last several years is a little, a little rich. But I will say that this is a very, this is a very simple question, and if you notice, it's, we're dealing with obfuscation rather than, the only question at hand, the only question at hand is are state laws being violated? It's not, you know, and for me to be, you know, for me to be lined up with all the other, you know, right-wing folks that you've named- know, right-wing folks that you've named is, is a little bit silly and, and actually just not looking at, at what the question is. My question, and I do want to say this about supervisory elections, we're not going to hear from them because just like the school board, they have no investigative power. They have none. School board has none. And also to make a correction, I did not say that Ms. McGraw should not vote. I said the board should not vote. The board should not be making major decisions when we have a situation that has divided this district. Now, I really, you know, for, for me to be attacked when I'm talking specifically about is, you know, I think the state statute is very clear and you know what, I'm not an attorney and I don't know, I do not know what the correct remedy is. The remedy, there are about three ways that that could, that it could be determined. One, Ms. McGraw could step down, which she's not, she's made that very clear, and I'm not asking her to. But that would solve the problem. The other would be of the governor, and I'm glad it's so funny. The governor could become the call or there could be, you know, a lawsuit. But, you know, just the, you know, when I write an email, it is public record. So I don't have any problem, you know, I will be, if we're going to play that little game, then I can certainly pull out a bunch of screenshots that have been sent to me over the last few years, over the last couple of years. So, so I just am, I'm very disappointed that instead of, you know, the, it has something, this was not caused by me, this was not caused by anyone else other than the parties involved. So I, you know, I'm not sure exactly how you expect this to be resolved when, when you're calling on an agency that has no investigative power to do it. So I'll let that go for now and if we want to, you know, have a public meeting and, and do this, I, you know, I, I'm just, you know, if we're just going to ignore massive numbers of citizens and if you think that the state law applies just to one party or the other party, that's not true. We all swore to uphold the laws, the constitution laws of the United States and the State of Florida. That's what we all did. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Thank you, Ms. Surtin. And let me say this before I move to Dr. Simon and Mrs. McGraw. And Ms. Surtin, you can, okay. With all of what's been going on in our community most recently, I am somewhat distraught and disappointed and some of the things that you stated, Mr. Hyatt, are true and many of the things that Mrs. Surtin has stated is true. But as far as holding up the vote, whether you said Mrs. McGraw or the board, as chairman, I'm not in agreement with that. We have too many priorities, responsibilities, challenges facing this board and until we get to the end of whatever this discussion is leading us to, we are going to vote. Dr. Paulson is absent today, but we will take our votes. There was no vote scheduled for today, but come Tuesday, when there will be business to contend with for this district, we will be voting. And I'm hoping that all five of us will be here to vote. And I hope that after our statements today, nothing else will be stated about anyone. I don't like it. Some things needed to be stated and gotten off of our chest. Both of you have had that opportunity, but it's done. I'm going to Dr. Simon and then I'm going to Mrs. McGraw.
Thank you, Chair McNeely. So in light of this discussion, in the light of the information that was shared last week through the petition, the district has been doing internal discovery as far as what we have in our documents, as far as any sort of board minutes, recordings and all of that. One of the things, and this is just some information for the public, so generally what happens is after a census, which is every 10 years, the, the government entities look at the populations and determine if they need to examine their precincts and how we do redistricting of voting groups. And so that goes into a resolution. And so then the school district, the school board would vote on a resolution that approves the districting for voting for the board members. The last recorded redistricting resolution was done August 21st, 2001. We have been talking to attorneys who were present during 2011, which would have been the last census, which I will note, we have a census that just occurred. So in this process of all of this, that we have realized that we will need to be looking into doing a 2021 district decision. But what ends up being extra complicated about this situation is that the resolution from 2001 was the last recorded vote that is required in statute, that does have to go to the clerk of courts, it does have to go to the Department of State. We know that that's the last one we have. We've done our internal workings to find out if there was anything. Like I said, when we talked to our attorneys, it turns out that in 2011, that's the other thing about this is that you can only do this in odd years. So in 2011, there was a discussion with the supervisor of elections. We have this by the district attorney at that time as well as the board attorney at that time. And it turns out that there was a delay of getting the information from the supervisor of elections to look at the population numbers. And so the window is essentially what happened is it became 2012, the window closed. The window would have opened again in 2013, but it appears as though there was not a decision to do the redistricting. So the last time this resolution occurred was in 2001. The additional complication is in 2001, we had 53 precincts, not 71. And so this election that has occurred has been on 71. On top of this complication, we do have a series of maps and we're still in this area where we're trying to figure out this process. So when we do the 2021, we understand how all decisions were made, but the maps seem to have changed. And so right now we are in discussions with the fags department or fags organization. I know that they're right now reaching out to the governor because there are components that are complicating the situation a bit more. So I'd say at this point, we really don't know what the whole full scope of the situation is to have any form of an assessment, at least on our end. Thank you.
I do appreciate that complicated explanation. I'm sure that that will come up again in the future with the persons responsible for all of the investigations, but I do stand as chairperson of this board to say that until something comes to us in writing, we will not hold up the business at hand, but we will go forward with our June 15th board meeting, which there is a lot of business on the agenda and we will not stop with our voting process because of anything that has not been cleared as of yet. Did you understand that Superintendent Simon? Yes, ma'am. Mrs. McGraw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak. And thank you to Dr. Simon, who just shared very important facts in the process that has taken, taken place. And at this time, as the person who is in this situation, I was elected by every, and everybody had an opportunity to vote for me in Alachua County. As she said, it is very complicated because me being in this situation has discovered that we never considered, this board never considered the 2010 census data. As the law states, looking at what I have from former attorney Jim Stads back in 2001, your boundaries and things have to be withdrawn every 10 years once you receive the census data. That never took place. And as she said, we're now up to 71 precincts. Back then, a lot of the precincts that all five districts cover did not exist back in 2001. And so to, to correct that, your board, the school board, and talk about the board, the school board in the odd years has to look at the districts and make sure they are covered that, how they're required to be covered. So this time, I cannot say much more, being the person, but that is where we are in a complex situation because of what was not, when you're talking about following the law, we did not follow the law, which requires you to redraw your districts after you receive the census data. And so here we are in the odd year 2021 and everything the superintendent said is where we are. I do have responses from former staff attorneys and in board attorneys regarding this matter. But thank you for being, Madam Chair, and I will continue to serve all of the children here in Alachua County. I thank Board Member Surtin for sharing that this is, I've been in office, I was elected back in August, we're now at eight months or nine months, and this is about change. And so I just continue Godspeed on me and all of the people who support me. I appreciate that and I continue to ask you to continue to pray that you continue to move forward and make sure all of the children in Alachua County. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. McGraw. One of the things, when Superintendent Simon was talking about resolutions, the part that I got, if, if, and I don't want to belabor the point, but the fact of the matter that you were saying what part the school district plays in this whole mapping of districts, that would mean if we have not, since 2001, you said, since 2001, that means that Dr. Paulson, Mrs. Surtin, myself, Mr. Hyatt, we are all in with the problem. We are all, we all may need to step down because if you have, the resolution hasn't changed in any of those odd years, then we are all suspect as far as our district. I see attorney, attorneys here nodding with me and that makes me a little nervous. Let, let, let Simon and then attorney.
So I think this is why it's complicated and so this is why we're, we're reaching out. We're, we are still very much at the investigation period because we are, we're trying to figure out what has gone on. There are some people who are no longer with us who were part of these decision makers or some that are, as well as we're looking through all of our documents. We have, you know, we have documents that go back to the 1800s. So there's a level of just trying to really understand the scale and scope of this dilemma that we're in. But I would say it's fair to say we're in a fairly large dilemma.
All right. So, I, I, Mr. Hyatt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't want to address at all the current situation. I want to look forward and, and what I think would be good for the future when this comes up. And I really appreciate getting this information on, that we're, we have this year to fix, to get this right. But I think it would be helpful if we had fewer maps of the county rather than more maps. So I hope that for the future, have nothing to do with this, with where all of us are now, but for the future, I hope that we could have the same numbered districts as the county commission. It, it, it would be less confusing and it wouldn't, and when that changes, it wouldn't affect anyone's term who's already on the board. But, and so when we get to that, that might be something that we could all consider. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hyatt. Ms. Surtin?
Madam Chair.
What, what, Ms. McGraw?
I want to say one, this is up to the five points of the rules and regulations, it is up to this board at any meeting. You can call a meeting to have, talk about controlling the boundaries to make sure we're all okay. That's in the, that's in the law.
Well, we, we need to have that mighty quickly because I think all of us might be in trouble. Simon?
The only thing to add on that is we should consider we'll need the census data and my understanding is that would be somewhere around October. So, but that's, it's been helpful for us because now we're trying to prepare, like what are the steps that we need to take in order to do this. But the census data is crucial and Mr. Hyatt's point that was presented has been something that we've been discussing internally as well because although they do have the five, they're not all aligned.
Okay. This has been a robust discussion and inasmuch that we have a meeting at 6:00, we'll be at recess until then. I thank the citizens for being here with us today. I thank you for those of you who are listening, wherever you may reside or work, and we will come back at 6:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Good evening, everyone. We are ready to reconvene. We just finished up our break and so we're ready to reconvene from this morning session. Attorney, attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, as you stated, we were scheduled for a public hearing at 11 o'clock today where we heard some citizen input on the proposed new and amended job descriptions for administrative, professional, technical and education support professionals. We have reconvened tonight for the purpose of allowing additional citizen input for those citizens that were not available to come earlier today. So I would just ask to open the floor to additional citizen input on either the executive summary, statement of purpose, effective job descriptions, or the proposed changes since the first meeting that was held on May 20, 2021.
Thank you, Attorney, Attorney. There are those that are here that may not have been with me, but we shared with the booth if you have any call. Is that clear? Okay, thank you. No followers?
Can I make an amendment?
As long as this is having to do with a job description, but we have no votes for yet.
No, maybe I just want to make an amendment. I mean, that's all.
I think we will have to wait until the 15th day to actually vote.
Well, I think, like, if you could, I think you can make a choice if I ask, or make an amendment as the chairman.
I think it's more likely you could go on and make the amendment, but I would much prefer you.
I appreciate it. Well, I'm a different way. If it's going to be quick and you guys might, I might not get a second or might I get a... If it's going to be quick and you guys might, I might not get a second or might I get a?
There's no voting.
Yes, but this chairman can make the decision. All right.